All right, I see the nine, the time is nine five thirty, we're now going to call the City of Boyd, of Alderman, and Mayor into order. Uh, first thing, of course, things of implication and pleasure, we'll be vouch for it forever. Dear Heavenly Father, we come before you once again, uh, thank you for your mercy, your grace, as we each, and every one of us, each entering in each and every day. We thank you for the blessings that you've given us in the ones to come, and we thank you for the opportunity to serve this community. It was the wisdom and the guidance to make the right and the best decisions for our city, our country, and our county. And, uh, your honor, we pray, and we thank you in Jesus's name, amen. There we stand for pleasure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, and with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you everybody for coming this evening, and, uh, we'll go right into our agenda. As the agenda's been presented before you, first thing we have on the agenda, item number three, is approval of amendments from our regular August eighth meeting. Uh, are there any questions, corrections, concerns from the Alderman, as you peruse the minutes?
I make a motion, we adopt, uh, August eighth, two thousand twenty-three.
All right, in motion, and pop the second, any other questions, concerns? If you're none, we'll call for a vote, all of them, before you can let it know by sign of eye, those opposed, name, and approve. Um, we're gonna forego item number four, I did not get a correspondence from, I was spending London from the Housing Authority, so they're still working on that. Uh, item number five, it's an ordinance on ten zero zero four, it's a fireworks review on the second reading. And so, it's funny, uh, in the month of July, everybody want to talk about fireworks. I can't get enough fireworks, now we can, uh, here we are. So, at this time, we'll close out, um, our official board meeting session, open up a public hearing. Are there any questions, concern, or comments from the community concerning ordinance number ten zero zero four on the second reading? This is a fireworks ordinance that allows, um, restricted hours during the holiday, two holidays a year, and also for special events ads, i.e. the, uh, homecoming, uh, well, not home, the football, uh, uh, game the other night where it was a special event that had a permit for those professional fireworks. Are there any questions, concerns about the fireworks ordinance? Okay, hearing none, we'll close out our public hearing and go back in the session. I have before you ordinance number one zero zero four on the second reading, uh, do I hear a motion to approve? Make a motion, I hear a second. Okay, remove the second, all right, are there any questions, concerns, or do you want, do you want me to review the ordinance again? Are everybody good? Everybody good, okay, all those in favor, let it know by sign of eye, those opposed, name, ten, name, so we have one name, three hours, okay? All right, so we, uh, I think as we stay with four, if that passes on the second reading, uh, if this, if this ordinance does not, not work, then of course we revisit, but we, we had to make a change, okay? Uh, resolution number one zero five one, well, this is another, this is another adoption or technical text amendment from, um, the resolution of our City of Brownsville Board of Handbook. This handbook, the language had to be changed, uh, to make sure we met all federal standards and the federal, for the federal guidelines and our policy and procedure, in particular sexual misconduct, we reviewed this last week, but Ms. Bachelor did send it back in, uh, there was some, one or two technical languages had to be changed, but just, there was no major changes in the policies presented in the original. So, we have, of course, this resolution number one zero five one, admitting to Boyd handbook for the, for the sexual misconduct policy. Do I hear a motion to approve? Motion, do I hear a second? Remove, pop the second, are there any questions, concerns? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote, all those in favor, let it know by sign of eye, uh, those opposed, next. Okay, resolution number one zero five one passes. Uh, resolution number one zero five two, uh, it's a tourism enhancement grant, this is a grant we've applied for in the past, but now we're back up to have an opportunity to apply for it again. This tourism enhancement grant is, it's been a couple years since it's been released again, we're just asking, we're making sure we have a resolution in place so everybody's aware. It's a hundred thousand, up to a hundred thousand dollars, it's a five percent match, which will come from the City of Brownsville. Um, this grant, we're applying for was to be to do enhancements in phase one of the Carver Museum, uh, right to the right of the interestway. Uh, this will be, uh, we have an architect that put in some sketches and some opportunities for, for to start the renovation of the museum, so we have a first-class, um, African-American museum in the Carver building, which is a county-owned building, but we have full cooperation from the school board, uh, from the Alumni Association to go move forward, and we have architecture drawn. So, at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve, uh, the resolution number one zero five two to apply for the tourism grant, do I hear a motion? Do I hear a second? Second, then move and pop the second, any questions, concerns? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote, all those in favor, let it know by sign of eye, uh, those opposed, next, okay? We'll let you know when we get awards for the grant. Moving right along, we have a roadblock for the Homecoming Parade, is there anyone here representing? Okay, this is Tim Seymour, the Athletic Director for the April High School Homecoming Parade, it's something that's been a tradition, um, it's on eight thirty, twenty twenty-three, is the application date, the date of the bid is nine twenty-nine twenty-three, from one thirty to three P.M., um, in the Homecoming Parade, it will be issued on Main Street. Um, there has been a certificate of liability insurance presented and properly filed here, so at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the roadblock permit for the Homecoming Parade, do I hear a motion? Motion, do I hear a second? Remove and pop the second, any questions, concerns? Hearing none, let's call for a vote, all those in favor, let it know by sign of eye, uh, those opposed, next. Um, roadblock permit, Main Street, Halloween in Haywood, Mr. Ward, you want to kind of give us a brief explanation of what?
Oh, yes, sir. Oh, Halloween in Haywood, we'll have that October the sixteenth, at the AMP, from six o'clock to eight o'clock, we'll have, uh, food, uh, PTs, a food truck will be there, bouncy houses, uh, games, uh, probably a hayride for kids, that kind of thing, so, probably costumes, so we're gonna decorate down there, and, uh, along with that, we'll have some fall decorations out around the square, and, uh, I know this is a little off subject, but we were hoping maybe with y'all's blessings that we could have our scarecrow contest, our scarecrows on town park, and have them propped up around on the benches, just like they are enjoying the park, and so.
I think that'd be fine. Is that part of it, is that part of the?
Pretty much, that's, well, yeah, this, you know, sort of the fall activities, and eventually, you know, when we get closer to Halloween, we'll take the scarecrows that we've got around, and probably do something more Halloweenish, you know?
Okay, but I'll make a motion then that we approve the roadblock permit for Main Street, uh, on October sixteen, twenty twenty-three.
They're moved, I hear a second. The motion and second, do I, are there any questions, concerns? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote, all those in favor, let it know by sign of eye, uh, those opposed, next.
Okay, could I have one more second?
Sure, go right ahead.
Uh, we are working on a project called Art in the Alley, and that is gonna be between, uh, Katz and Spencer Jones in that alleyway, and I have some drawings, but I know I'm not really on the schedule for it, but do y'all see any, would y'all have any problem with us pursuing that, you know, in that alley? It would be a series of murals, you know, depicting scenes from Haywood County. We have Marty Stoops that actually has drawn some drawings, which I have with me, that, you know, she's an excellent artist, she's already done one mural on the AMP restroom, so she would be sort of in charge of it. You know, of course, we'd have to get a C.O.A. and get approval, but we're working on that, we've got a man that's willing to donate several thousand dollars towards that project.
Okay. I don't see any problem with it, the property owners don't have the property.
I'm talking with the partners, and he's all for it, but probably more on his side of the building, because that's where the brick is. The other side on Spencer Jones is, well, it's just not as easy to work with.
Okay.
So, the approval process on that would be, does that have to go to, uh, the donor, or does that have to go?
Historic, so.
Yeah, yeah, to get approval, we'll have to show them what we're gonna do. That's where you get your C.O.A. from?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, sounds good, what else y'all doing on Main Street, y'all?
Sir?
What else y'all doing on Main Street?
Woo, well, you know, we've been working on facade grants for a while now, and I think we finally got the Folka Dare three estimates. So, they, when, uh, Ms. Bachelor and, uh, Casey Smith get together, they can pick one, and maybe we can get started on that. Mars Jewelers did not get the single pump the first bid, so, we about to go back to the drawing board on that. So, we've got, you know, fifty thousand dollars that we can use on facade grants, if we can ever get the process going.
Okay, well, thank you for your work.
Yes, sir.
All right, next on our agenda, we have, um, another roadblock, for the Marlin Gotti Memorial Five K. And he's just kind, I was wondering why you're here. Good to see you, though.
Um, this is our eighteenth year to meet the Marlin Gotti Five K, and it, it starts at College Hill, goes down, um, Grand to Key Corner, and then up Thomas, up Hart, and then down Key Corner, and then Lafayette, and then back up West College to College Hill. It starts at nine, uh, we raise about fifteen thousand dollars a year that goes to different local organizations.
Okay, uh, y'all, so, did Golden Circle provide some?
They are, but they only give it to us thirty days in advance, and it comes September, I mean, October twenty-eighth, so we can't get it until thirty days prior to that date.
Check, all right, at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the roadblock permit for the fifteenth Review Club, uh, run, do I hear a motion? So, move, I hear a second, remove, pop the second, any questions, concerns? Hearing none, all the favor, let it know by sign of eye, uh, those opposed, next.
Thank you.
You turned into a really big fireman. All right, um, next on our agenda is the Community Development Report, um, Ms. Crystal Matthews.
Are there any questions regarding the Community Development Report? Uh, the only update that I do have, I did check on the Hatchet, uh, the CDBG, and they said we should have known award information by maybe October or November.
Okay, so, and we know payment is the number one issue for a lot of people, all of us, including Chief Evans, so, we were working on it. We're working on getting those grants in place for, uh, Hatchet, Anderson, and of course, we're in the deeper phase for commercial rolling of multiple grants. So, we'll continue to work on those things, I might move as fast as I would like to move, but we are, we are, we're on the case, all right? Um, now we have the Financial Management Report, we know Ms. Bachelor's here, but she's, uh, she's out on bereavement, uh, with her pastor and her sister, so we want to keep her in your prayers. But what you do have before you is the Financial Management Report, do you have any questions or concerns about the monthly reporters that have been presented?
Nope, I'll make a question. Good, I make a motion, we adopt, uh, Financial Management Report.
Go ahead, second. Remove and pop the second, all those in favor, let it know by sign of eye, uh, those opposed, next, okay? Uh, we do have one budget amendment, uh, uh, if you look into your packet there, you see a budget amendment for an amount of ninety-nine thousand eight hundred fifteen dollars. Uh, with this is on the CXX rail crossing, that we've been working on, long as I can remember, uh, to finally get it done, um, we, and we did have in there a budget, because this is, it's crossed over several budgets, uh, this time, but what we do, this is reimbursed, but we need to go ahead, we have an invoice, and we need to go ahead and pay, uh, and the grant, we do have a grant in place, we'll pay a hundred percent of what you see here for today. We paid the match on the front, so, uh, this is a budget amendment to pull the money from the fund balance and then have it reimbursed to the fund balance. Uh, this is one, only, a budget amendment on the agenda for tonight, uh, do I hear a motion to approve? Motion, do I hear a second? All right, any questions, concerns? Okay, hearing none, we'll call for the vote, all those in favor, let it know by sign of eye, uh, those opposed, next, okay, I said. Um, the next, uh, the management report, how about that? All right, uh, it's been a busy, busy, um, month, it seems like it's been several months, but it's been a busy month. On August the twenty-third, we signed the final contract with the N.C. Industries, this was a historic document, you see myself, you see the big smile on my face? You can't fake that, um, this is huge for Brownsville, I, I just can't say it enough, over all the years of working hard, and Mr. U, uh, personally brought the documents, Mayor Livingston and I were on the phone about ten o'clock the night before, and the two of us were able to figure out exactly what the language was, and we were both comfortable with, uh, and we're gonna move forward, so now they, we made the announcement, they did the due diligence, now we have a contract and placed a sales agreement for the property at our Ford Advantage Park, a front hundred thirty-five acres, so, uh, it was exciting, and then later in the month, I'll talk about that, Mr. U is the president of N.C. America, who offered a visit from N.C. International, he thought it was so important, Mr. U, and he personally came down, they just only stayed one day, they, with the lunch, and they flew back out, went out to look at the site, and, uh, it's a very good, it feels, it just feels right, that we have, we welcome N.C. to our community, with the high quality of paying tech jobs that it's gonna bring, and the opportunity to expand. Uh, I had the opportunity to go to the M.B.D.C. Conference in Memphis, I was debating whether going or not, but it was so close, and I can't tell you the energy and the, uh, the network in the room. MAGA, MAGA was there, that's gonna be one of our own-site suppliers, um, for Blue Over City, they had a booth there, there was, the core engineers were there, and the Under Secretary for Commerce for Minority Business, well, this is a new position, he's from Louisiana, uh, Mr. Don Cravis, Jr., and he serves in the National Guard, um, and he's on his way to being promoted, uh, when he left there that day. But this position is now official, from, uh, signed into, uh, law for the White House, and they, we want and are asking, and telling minority businesses that the opportunity is now, um, with Blue Over City coming, now we have money in place, we have opportunity in place, it's gonna make a huge difference, uh, not only for all business, just, not just minority women on business, but this conference was well worth attending and very, very, very informative. Well, I have an opportunity to ask, we promised to go out and visit somebody existing in the industry, uh, went out to Westlake, uh, and I was just thinking about this earlier, well, I want to make sure we bring Dylan, uh, Dylan, and he's our new co-enforcement guy, um, and he's doing an excellent job, and you see Caleb, Ms. Matthews, myself, but we, uh, Westlake, former Alaska, you know, all of you can tell you about that, some of the issues there, but what we were most impressed with was air conditioning. They've air-conditioned their entire workspace. Their air-conditioned space, so they made a tremendous investment, I can't remember the millions of dollars they invested into, not only that, but they wanted to be a part of the community, they did a total face of a painting, they're talking about safety, they, and they air-conditioned the workspace, I mean, that's just invaluable. Uh, they also have bonuses in place, for production and for safety, so, we were, Mr. Grant, his team were, were very welcoming, want to see more of them, so, we took some of the young guys with us, uh, we thought it was important that they be involved too. Um, I know we all talked about the E.V. charging station, I mean, this is, this is another monumental, monumental, uh, uh, infrastructure project for the City of Brownsville. So, at the Delta Heritage Center, we're in cooperation with T.V.A., the Brownsville Energy Authority, and the City of Brownsville, we're to bring these quick, fast charging, uh, charging stations around, the only ones between Memphis and Jackson, uh, right here in Brownsville, Tennessee. The day we made the, did the ribbon cutting, it'd been eighteen users, uh, it's forty-two cents per kilowatt hour, we use your credit card, the rates are set by Brownsville Energy Authority, and the proceeds go to them, but they made investment into the grant, um, you see some of the, you know, movie callers there from T.V.A., and you see people from T.V.A., and Sonny, and Mark Yates, Ms. Flag, Ford, S.K., uh, and Brownsville Energy Authority, the guy in the back with the big hat, that's the bill leader, that's Ferris. So, it was, it was, it was, it was a good day, um, we had a Machi, you know, a Lightning, and we had a Volkswagen vehicle there that actually were being charged at the site, so, when we bring people in for this opportunity, for, uh, this infrastructure project, and for convenience, it's a quick charging station. There are four stations, well, one car on each station that provides quick charging, two on each station goes to a slow charge. They have different levels, level one, level two, and level three, this is a level three charging station, and a major, major, a hundred, about five, six hundred thousand dollar investment, I can imagine.
Hey, there.
Yes, sir.
Just to clarify to you, that's a Brownsville bill, not the governor's bill.
That's right, that's right, that's right, that's right.
You must be worried about that.
No, 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 that's true, he might have some boots on if he wanna win there, all right, um, and Chief Evans is here, thank you, chief, well, this is something we see, you'll see new patches on our Brownsville Police Department uniforms, and you'll see a sense of pride, new striding, um, the patch was designed exactly, well, by one of our officers, so, you see the patch on the front, we had a local vendor, Chris Moore, and Ferocious Graphics, to do the wrap on, um, and, and didn't stand out, and it looked good, so we're in the process of doing the white vehicles, and any new vehicles we have, some of the striking on Longfield, something will peel off, and Ms. Flag, you get new vehicles, we'll make sure we put the new striding on, um, so, we, we, we want to have a sense of pride in our police department, thank you for your service, and, uh, it's a thankless job, but I want to say thank you. Um, I did, yesterday, I had the chance, uh, yes, Bishop went to Nashville, um, there was a, a, an opportunity to talk about Blue Over City. Uh, the young man, Jimmy Strong, he's a Morehouse graduate like myself, and a Harvard lawyer, uh, but, Ms. Jackie Albari, who's originally from Brownsville, Tennessee, put together a group of economic developers, and people that wanted to do quality projects, they talked, first session was about, uh, Nashville, where barge and design engineering, overlooking what's gonna be the new stadium, uh, and they also were doing some construction projects at the airport, and to involve everybody, including minority business, so, uh, Ms. Albari gave the opportunity to get up and talk about Blue Over City and opportunities we have here in West Tennessee, and I simply put, it's a, it's a billions of dollars between Memphis and Nashville, uh, we want to be a part of that conversation, so, I thank you for giving me the opportunity, uh, that's my report, that's, um, I think I have a couple more bullet points to begin. Uh, can't forget about Nashville Night Out, of course, Ms. Flag is, is cheering and cheering that, that effort again, of course, it's going to be October third, from five to nine, I'll let her take more about the vendors and things she have, but we want to make sure this was on the screen, so that you know, I've had contacts before, and throughout the entire community, this is, if not the largest, one of the largest events that we do on an annual basis, uh, here in Brownsville, we have one of the largest national nights out anywhere in the state of Tennessee, so, it's something to be proud of, and definitely participate in, uh, October third, five to nine P.M., at the East Side of the Michigan Soccer Field. Uh, we're putting together Breast Cancer Awareness Walk, uh, it'll be Saturday, October fourteenth, uh, twenty twenty-three, from nine to eleven A.M., and we're working in conjunction with the county to use the L.Z. Early Memorial Stadium, uh, we get, we want to get like Westlake and Technor, and everybody involved in this, and we're gonna continue to advocate for breast cancer awareness, uh, we know it affects our community in so many ways, so, the City of Brownsville is part of our healthy moves, we're gonna take the initiative to do this walk. Uh, we also visited Technor and Pepsi, they wouldn't let us take any pictures, but we did go, um, and we were, and next up on our agenda is decision calls. Um, I did have the opportunity to present a check to Carl Perkins Telethon Jackson on behalf of the City of Brownsville, um, and then, of course, I mentioned the N.C. America signing the contract, but we also had the N.C. International, uh, to come, it's all came with his family, uh, got a chance to actually see the property, and they were very pleased about the relationship. Um, Ms. Flag and some others, uh, Ms. Fisher J. O. here, some others were at the Silicon Ranch Public Meeting, where people got to voice their opinions about where the, the, uh, solar farm could go, possibly as it comes before the planning commission, so that was another opportunity for us to engage the community, uh, and, and the picture that, uh, we saw before was the partnerships and prosperity in Nashville, so that's my report, as I presented over the last thirty days, seemed like it was a long time ago, um, but we're steady on the job, thank you. Next on the agenda, uh, we have our Alderman's report, Alderman Taylor? Alderman Vice Mayor Flag?
Good evening, I have, um, the report, the T.V.A., the office is one million four hundred point one thousand two hundred and ninety-two percent. Lake County, I mean, uh, County, unemployment rate of July is five point four percent, December the first, the average resident remunerated decreased approximately two point six percent to the T.V.A. cost adjustment, again, October one, T.V.A. was implementing wholesale rate adjustment of four point five percent, ensuring reasonable head, you know, you know, going demand, even under the government, and, uh, National Night Out, it was scheduled for November, and then October the third, and I guess I'm kind of excited about it, because I have already, we have about forty-five applications, there's people that submitted, but, you know what, y'all can go back and continue your passion, I have one church that has made applications in National Night Out, I'm a drug and alcohol, you tell them I have one church, Cadre Baptist Church, on the third. Well, you ain't gotta give it back. I'm just saying, we had all this, we had all these people that's been free over here, and it's about drug and alcohol, the churches always, they're gonna get involved, they're gonna do, tell this is the time, they're gonna fit out and come out there, walk there, soccer field, and put children on the back and see what they can do to help it out there, one church application, so, I have about forty-five applications that are already submitted, that's a lot of entertainment, and that, it didn't cost anything, everything is free, everything that people come out there and they give away, and they give nice, they give hot dogs, hamburgers, food, popcorn, whatever, give away, but to me, it's just really sad that the churches are not involved in terms of like drug and alcohol, and we have some addition, especially this year, we've had, we lost a lot of the four people, and we're gonna have a candlelight video for them, and, you know, we're gonna have five rooms, and we're gonna go stand with four families, uh, uh, be on, uh, the night of, uh, National Night Out, so y'all come and support these people, they put them on the back, and nothing else, we're thinking about them, and, uh, I have some applications for the Christmas parade.
Why?
They're gonna be given out, so I have, you know, and also, any of you that you know that want to take part in National Night Out, they have some applications off of, for them to keep their lives, so, I mean, at National Night Out, to me, I, I enjoy it, because it's happened, it's a fellowship, it's that person, I've got his friends, I got everyone, I got car fans, I got all types of people that's out there, and your own attorney gonna be the M.C., so he's, he's got, he's got a full, full night, and I'm gonna have straight light dancing, and if any of y'all know Jimmy Curry, he's gonna be there dancing, y'all, I have.
Sounds like a good time.
I might see him dance again.
Uh-oh, uh-oh, uh-oh.
Oh, I have one other.
Yes, ma'am.
Question. Can anybody bring me up to date on Dr. Preston's office?
That is a good question, um, I think that had been taken on as a project, uh, I hate to throw in the bus, Bishop, but here we go, the H- Historic Heritage Society, have you, do we have any updates on this, as a court?
Uh, you know, the, uh, Ms. Dan Preston out of Memphis bought that building.
Okay.
You know, it's, I mean, just the, the history on it is, you know, that, uh, a guy out of Texas or wherever bought it, uh, Larry Banks, and a couple others, Law Reed, and some went to him, and Fred Sirstein, they arranged for the building to be bought by not profit for a dollar, basically, uh, and Haywood Heritage bought the building, and then, uh, sold the building, uh, with the intentions of her coming in with her plan, you know, to, to come in and, uh, make a restaurant slash music venue, uh, out of that, and, uh, I think that fell through, it didn't work out, so.
Who would be responsible for, we just said, wind chaise or something, or cutting grass, and you just follow up?
Well, I mean, our, I mean, our coach will have to, I guess we'll have to talk to Van Preston about, uh, she lives in Bartlett, but I, I, I'll do that, it's just, it's just my award, uh, I will, uh, we discussed grass cutting several times, we got somebody there to cut the grass, but, uh, I'll, uh, I'll talk to Coach and talk to him about what needs to be done, and be, and be the coach and the parents, I know it's important out there.
Okay, thank you, that concludes your report, all of them, Bishop, though?
Not with me about that. Uh, okay, uh, there's a couple items there, last night, we had a library board meeting.
Okay.
And just to update, uh, the director of the library, uh, Ms. Catherine Holman has had some health problems, she's continuing to get better, she was there in the meeting last night, uh, so that was a positive sign, I think she's, she's on the road to recovery, albeit in slow recovery due to the stroke. Uh, but we, we've been getting back, uh, Elizabeth, uh, the assistant director has been, been acting as a director, and making everything work. We're in the, in the middle of doing some policy updates, we've booked challenging policies, and several different new items that have come down the libraries across the country, uh, polarization, um, politics and different things, how to handle, how to handle any kind of, uh, challenges that we might have, so, like, we're heading in the right direction, uh, we'll send the sales agreements up to both City Mayor and County Mayor, they've been approved in the budgets, but has to be signed and sent to Secretary of State's office. You have that one other item, uh, I've been getting a lot of calls, and I know you've seen it, you've probably seen it in some of the news, uh, you know, just a couple blocks off of Main Street, we really got a problem.
Uh, you know, just a couple of blocks off of Main Street, we really got a problem. It's excessive, excessive speed on College Street. And I, and I talked to the chief about that, so I'm not, not bringing that up blind, uh. But we had a car that went airborne and dumped upside down in Chris Moore's front yard on College Street back several months ago. Uh, then just Sunday, due to some different circumstances, we had a car coming up off of uh, Monroe. About a minute, coming in, flipped a pole right in the middle of town. Uh, and I think the citizens concerned, and my concern too, are partly is that, look, it's just a matter of time before somebody gets killed over there. Uh, or, or anywhere with excessive speeding and out of control vehicles. So, so Chief, and I challenged him earlier, we, we collectively, we gotta come up with a solution to slow this traffic down. And uh, you know, it, it may be thinking outside of the box to get some control measures in place to do that. But uh, I'm fully committed to doing that, and I think, I think Eric Parkman had several of them, fully committed to. It's just like loud and unmanageable. I mean, it's not like you're going five miles over the speed limit, it's like you're just almost lawless in some cases. So, anyway, I, I appreciate our conversation today, Chief, and I look forward to, to looking at, at some solutions to that. That's our last.
Thank you. Alderman Peter?
I'll hurry it down inside.
Okay, uh, Alderman Department has had reports tonight. Chief Sanders, Chief Evans?
Uh, hopefully, during the new picture, we'll be, uh, we're gonna, another phase with our vehicles, starting with white vehicles. And also with the, the grants that are coming forward, which will include putting the scanners and the cost citations. So we guys can make more traffic stops than actually running our luxury tractors in the car. And uh, hopefully, purchase some more Skycot uh, cameras, going to stationary, stationary, the high ground area. So we're gonna move forward with that.
Thank you, Chief. Chief Sanders? I wanted to ask you about your ladder truck, that's, I talked about that. Alright, um, are there any other department has had reports, sir? Okay, here and none, I'd like, at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn. So I'm moving, do I hear a second? Alright, all those in favor, say aye?
Alright.
Get them, go home.